It's louder in my deer stand.
Okay, it's Monday, November 2nd. I want to call this Committee of the Whole for the Spooner Area School District meeting to order. Members of the audience are welcome to ask questions and share insights on committee of the whole agenda items as they are being considered by the school board. Please raise your hand to be recognized by the board president. You are asked to come to the microphone so that everyone can hear your question or idea. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the agenda item being considered. Can I have a roll call, please?
Me, Ben Shapiro.
Here.
Chriselle Jackson.
Here.
Kate McKinnney.
Here.
Ms. Damon Melton.
Present.
Deb Olson.
Here.
Marshall Sherwood.
Here.
All right, item C. I have a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, we'll move on to item number two, presentations. Dr. Azlan, item A.
So this evening, we have an important presentation of an award from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. And this board member is being recognized for going above and beyond the call, participating in WASB events, and also in this COVID environment, participating in the online professional development opportunity programs that are there. The WASB Member Recognition Program recognizes board members for their efforts in leadership and board development. Points are awarded to school board members, again, for their attendance at events or logging into remote learning and training opportunities that the WASB and the National Association of School Boards provides. So tonight, I would like to recognize Board President Deb Olson for achieving Level 1 in the WASB Member Recognition Program.
Thank you. Very much. All right. And we're going to move now to item B, Referendum Project Update. Brad Kunkel from CC-10.
Good evening and congratulations.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna keep it somewhat brief here today because our November and our December and January board meetings are gonna be much more time-consuming. Just kind of a heads-up. We're working through the design right now. Been working a lot with SDS, really getting to some of the details, making sure they have everything accounted for. We're gonna be getting a version of those construction documents this week to begin review. Then we'll start taking them internally at our office, start reviewing them as well. And then on Wednesdays, as it's virtual here, we'll actually do onsite walkthroughs and just make sure they're accounting for everything that's needed, especially when you get up above ceilings, things like that. Layouts aren't exactly what they look like on the plan, so just trying to make sure we don't have change orders down the road. Looking at the design approval, we'd be doing that December board meeting. So the COW meeting, we'd look at presenting and then look for approval the third Monday. Then for bid timelines, we'll be starting to release all of our, all of the design documents, as well as all the documents CC has put together in December. Start walkthroughs again the Saturday, pretty much up till Christmas, and then receiving those bids in January. Look to present the bid tabulation to you during the board meeting, and then the next time we meet, look at approval for that.
Okay.
Did want to let you know that we are close to getting our contractor list put together. We're gonna hopefully have an internal review this week. Look to meet with the district perhaps next week. Really trying to stick with as many local contractors as possible. Some of the trades, it's more difficult than others to find those local qualified contractors, but by all means, it's, it is something we're working very hard on. Other things we're gonna be doing, may do some additional asbestos sampling. Originally said we'd wait till Christmas break, but just trying to get as much information as possible before bids are in, and again, help to minimize change orders. We'll be doing a district page turn after CC has a chance to look through the design documents, and it's usually a snoozer for administration, fair warning, but it is what it is. Bid packages, we're still looking at just over 40 right now. Construction schedule, did want to get into a little bit. It was gonna be overall pretty brief, so just wanted to give you a heads-up of the projects that are at least gonna be started come summer 2020. So elementary, we'll be looking at the new addition. That's gonna be somewhere more time-consuming construction. I would say, we hope to turn it over to the district late spring, and so that they could have that new space available either summer 2021, or at least certainly by fall 2021. Other areas that we'll look at will be the exterior doors that need to be replaced, dehumanification, again, that's one that it's gonna go a little past the summer, especially tying into the new addition, but should have that fully operational by spring as well. Playground will be taken a look at, refinishing the gym floors, bleachers, and drinking fountains. Middle school's gonna be demoing the gym and new office, and then, again, that's gonna be a similar timeframe. It'll be constructed a little sooner, but hopefully able to move in again late spring, 2021. Other areas we'll be looking at is bathroom fixtures, exterior doors, elevator, exterior sealants, windows, roofing, gym bleachers, gym floor, removing the ceramic tile at the gym, classroom flooring, and interior lighting. And really, the high school, absolutely everything but sealing the parking lot, including the work that's been done already. It's a sort of brief, but you guys have any questions, comments?
Anybody have any questions?
Can you repeat on the high school part?
Basically, everything besides sealing the parking lot. So we did do some mechanical work already this summer. So yeah, it really comes down to all the projects that we have listed for the high school. We'll have those completed this summer outside of the parking lot.
Brad, I know the timeline is kind of a moving target at this point, but when would you anticipate that you'd have contractors under contract as we roll into the first part of 2021?
I think best-case scenario we'd look at would be late February. It just, it takes time, and again, we could have up to 40 contracts. So just our administration, it takes time for that. I would say worst-case, by the end of March, assuming that we don't have a red line disaster. But that's, that I think's a fair goal.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Kunkel? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a, and we'll just receive and place that on file? Consensus? Okay. See if we can place it on file? Okay. All right. Item C. Let's go ahead.
Hi, Sheri. This is Kate Long from the school. Can you hear okay? Yeah. Perfect. Sounds good.
Okay. We're gonna move on to item C, update from the district nurse, Sarah Hamilton.
For those who are not aware, we're joined on the phone tonight by Sheri Nichols, who is our health officer for the county. Thanks for joining us, Sheri. I did submit a report for the Committee of the Whole meeting last week, and in the interim, there are some updates based on questions that have occurred over the past week. So I'm gonna go through that information with you and provide you some information, and then open it up for questions. Okay, thanks, Deb. How are close contacts or other students requiring exclusion determined? When a positive case is identified, we work with the health department to complete a communicable disease investigation. This is per Wisconsin State Statute 252. Communicable disease investigations occur for illnesses that require public health notification, such as pertussis, whooping cough, chicken pox, TB, sexually transmitted infections, and HIV. This is an established process in which the positive case is interviewed to determine close contacts, so these individuals can receive appropriate follow-up. This is a confidential process, meaning the identity of the positive case is not shared with the close contacts. This is to protect patient privacy and to protect the positive case from public backlash or other mistreatment. COVID is a Category 1 communicable disease in the state of Wisconsin, which means it also falls under Wisconsin State Statute 252. The COVID-specific process, per the health department and provided in writing to the board, is it is the policy of public health that we quarantine anyone who has been identified by a positive COVID case as being a close contact, after we have reviewed the definition of a close contact within six feet for a cumulative 15 minutes, being coughed or sneezed on, or having physical contact. Contacts may disagree that they meet the definition, but we still quarantine them, and we expect the school to exclude them. If you have a situation where it cannot be determined who was exposed, then the entire group will need to be quarantined. Any close contacts within 48 hours prior to onset of symptoms or date of test in an asymptomatic individual are excluded. It is impossible for the infected individual to know that they will develop symptoms and later test positive for COVID. We cannot assign blame when a student tests positive for COVID. Why are we wearing masks if mask use does not prevent a student from being excluded? From the Health Department. The rules are, if you are within six feet of someone with COVID for a cumulative 15 minutes during the day, you are a close contact and must be quarantined, regardless of mask use. While we know that mask use decreases the risk of transmission, it is not a 100% guarantee. The only time mask use gets you out of quarantine is when it's an N95 worn by a healthcare professional who is fit, tested, and educated in proper use. There are too many variables in cloth masks, the fit, the composition, the particular uses, usage, such as pulling it down or allowing it to dip below the nose, end quote. I would add that we wear masks to decrease transmission. It is estimated that an individual with COVID may infect at least two to three others. If we can lower that number, we will see a much less steep curve of infection. Decreasing transmission supports an environment where students can learn in person and participate in extracurricular activities, such as sports. How do you determine which classroom contacts are quarantined? At the high school, each teacher follows a seating chart. When a positive case is identified, myself or another individual take a measuring tape and measure the distance between students. At our current Level 2, we have full class sizes, and we do not have enough room for six feet between students. Generally, the desks around the infected student are quarantined, and in some cases, two seats over is within six feet. We have measured each time so that we can be certain, only the students who must be excluded are sent home. At the middle school and elementary school, students do not have a seating chart and mingle freely within their cohort, which is essentially their grade level classroom. There's four cohorts for each grade level. Therefore, the entire cohort is sent home when one individual tests positive. Can you test out of quarantine? You cannot test out of quarantine. At any time during the 14 days following exposure, you may develop symptoms and test positive. An initial negative test does not mean you will not test positive at a later date. Please remember, it is my role as a school nurse to follow the protocol established by our State Department of Health Services, under the direction of our local health department. It is the role of our local health department to follow these state protocols as well. Today, the DHS sent the following message for school nurses to share with their communities, that speaks to why we must all work together. Reducing the transmission of COVID-19 in schools and their surrounding communities hinges on carefully following the recommended school exclusion criteria. We understand the challenges that isolation and quarantine can place on families and schools, but the challenges will be even greater if the recommended steps are not taken to control transmission in school. People with symptoms of COVID-19 and people who test positive must be isolated as quickly as possible, and their close contacts must be identified and quarantined to minimize the additional spread of the virus. Failing to control transmission in schools could increase transmission, potentially affecting how schools deliver curriculum and leading to increased hospitalizations and deaths surrounding, and deaths in the surrounding communities. So let's work together to use the tools we've been given to keep our schools safe and healthy places for in-person learning and other activities. I'm guessing you have some questions. And I would also add that this COVID situation, it's easy to read and kind of learn, and we see what we need to know, and then when it actually happens and we have to process things in context of a real situation, questions come up, and people have questions, and they have to process what's going on, and it just takes time. So I'm here to answer questions.
Okay. Well, go ahead.
You certainly can. All right, wonderful. You've sent a letter to us last week as board members, and the first line under, where it says background, is it okay if I read this? Okay. It says, "At this time, we continue to see very high levels of COVID-19 in our area. All local health departments, including Washburn County, are no longer able to contact trace due to the overwhelming number of positive cases." Okay. I'm gonna ask right now, if Washburn County is no longer able to contact trace, is that a role that you feel comfortable taking on, and how long can you sustain doing that?
I'm gonna say that they are still doing contact tracing in the context of schools. They're definitely assisting us with that, and in the context of like, high-risk cases. And we've already been assisting Washburn County all school year with contact tracing, even prior to them having to step back from doing as much as they've been able to do. So when we had our first set of positive cases at the middle school, it was essentially the same process as what we had last week at the high school. Am I comfortable doing everything that there is to do with contact tracing and the rest of my job? It's a balancing act, and I would say there, it's deciding which parts of my job are most important this year.
Would you feel that that is the role that the school district should be doing? Should we be doing our own contact tracing? And should we be the ones to be doing this, or should this be the Health Department?
Both DHS and DPI indicate that we should work collaboratively with the Health Department to ensure that contact tracing occurs. Sheri, did you have anything to add to that?
Actually, Washburn County is still doing contact tracing for outside-of-school activities. So if we have somebody with COVID, we do their, you know, family and friends that are the non-school contact. Not, I would say, not all counties are still having that capacity, but probably one of the few that are. But at the same time, since the beginning of the school year, we partnered with the school nurses and with the administration itself, healthful nurses, to, because the school are the best people to determine who was exposed at school. We've given them the information that they need, and again, Sarah and I, we work collaboratively. We don't, you know, door to the wall, expect her to do this by herself. And she's doing a very good job.
Thanks, Sheri.
So that sentence there is not correct?
It's incorrect. I would say you could, you could, yes, they have cut back on what they're doing for contact tracing, but they have not completely stopped contact tracing. I apologize. Is that probably?
So we're assuming more of a role than we expected when we opened up our building?
Well, I wouldn't say we're assuming more of a role than we expected. I would say that due to the spike in COVID cases that we're seeing, we're seeing an increased role right now. We didn't know when the spike was gonna come, as far as increase in COVID cases, and we certainly didn't know that at this point in the year, Wisconsin would be third in the nation for how we're looking for COVID cases. So it's, it's a decent amount of work.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sarah, from those that were quarantined out of the four that are here, and we've had more sense, I know, how many have gotten it from those eight?
We did not end up with positive, oh.
So from those eight that are out?
Yep.
For COVID, not naming names, how many from them have been positive?
We did not end up with positive cases. I would add that we have a really low testing rate among our parents. So generally, about 25% of parents in the district have their kids tested, either when they're exposed or they're at school with symptoms. So.
So right, so.
It's hard to say.
But they haven't had any positives?
I have not had any positives in that group.
In that 14?
That was a good question.
Um, when we do a whole group, do we also do the teacher? Are we consistent?
The teachers are maintaining a distance of six feet at the middle school and the high school when they're teaching. At the elementary school, the teacher will be included.
Okay. And how about if a, when you do the contact tracing, and a student names other students, how do we verify that? That they're not lying for the other student so they can get out of school?
That's a problem, if they are doing that. So there's not a great way to verify that. We do have to take their word, but that is the established process, and we do have to go with it. So it could go both ways. You're absolutely correct. Students could make it up to get out of school.
And then they also could be saying somebody that's not true, and we're not believing the other student.
Right.
So we're not being consistent.
Oh, nope. As noted, the process for contact tracing and the process for dealing with a communicable disease investigation is that the positive case notes who their close contacts are, and it's not a two-way street, because I don't get to sit down with the student and say so-and-so tested positive for COVID. That would violate the confidentiality.
Nope, I understand.
So that's why.
But we all understand that all the kids know probably before you know that they're positive, correct? I mean, we're not gonna lie about it, because kids are kids, and they tell everybody everything, especially with.
Right, but as a nurse and as a district, we do have to follow HIPAA guidelines. We can't.
But what I'm saying is, so when there's a positive, and they say all of these kids were near them, we just take them for base value.
And if they are not a reliable witness, that's when we have to quarantine the whole group. So if we're unable to determine from the interview, is this person telling us the truth or not, that's when we just have to quarantine the entire group, or if they don't remember who they were in contact with, which is definitely within the realm of possibility for adolescents, is what we're seeing. They may not actually know who they were in contact with.
And are we seeing that we have a lot of students who aren't being truthful?
I guess that's not a statistic that I'm keeping.
We can't determine that. We have to go by what we are, what we are bound by the county health department to, to go by those, those rules. And so we can't, we can't assume that the kids are not being truthful.
I would think, I beg to differ, because what's out there right now is kids are saying, hey, do you wanna be out of school? Let me know.
Yep.
So let's just be straight about that. That's where this has a problem for a kid that does not wanna be in the, well, I think I was wrong, Johnny, Johnny goes out, it's his senior year, he wants to play football, was not in six-foot contact, but said that he was. This is a one-way street. This isn't a two-way street for some kids.
What I'm hearing, and I'm really concerned right now, is that I'm hearing that you're gonna be badgering people that are tested positive.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
By simply having this conversation, you are telling people that test positive not to expose, and I'm concerned about that. We should not be talking about this. We should be honoring the people that are tested positive. It is a confidentiality issue. She said simply that if you're tested positive, you give the names, they remain confidential. There's no appeal process, that's it. We keep our schools safe. We should not, as a school board, we should not be here trying to decide who's telling the truth and who's not. Follow the law.
I'm just saying that that's already out there, Paul.
It shouldn't be out there, and we're not gonna be discussing it in a public meeting.
I'm saying, kids are already asking, who wants to be out of school? That's a, that should be made public to the public.
That's, that's the way we're at right now. We have a law, and we're gonna follow those laws.
All right.
We're not gonna be, we should not be badgering people that test positive.
I don't think we badgering, but we do need.
You're questioning their honesty is what you're doing. You're questioning their honesty. We wanna keep our community safe.
I just think there's other ways to verify it.
There, we, there's no verification needed. It's confidential.
Come on. Okay, how many people have been hospitalized for our kids that have tested positive?
None of our kids who have tested positive have been hospitalized. Currently, our local area hospitals are not accepting non-COVID patients.
So zero.
I was on the phone with a provider today, and if someone does need to be hospitalized, there's no room for them.
Right, but zero been tested, zero been hospitalized?
Correct. Yep.
And all the people who've been quarantined, zero been hospitalized, because zero have tested positive.
Let's let Sheri say what she would like to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Are there people in Washburn County who've tested COVID?
I'm talking about our school.
So, as far as I know, there are no people associated with the school that, that shout, but there have been in other schools.
I'm talking about Spooner School District.
Well, unfortunately, we don't know who the people from Spooner School District who have tested positive, and who they may have given it to, who may have tested positive, because there's community spread. So we may study, be able to say, no one who attends the school has been hospitalized, but that's not to say that they haven't been the cause of other hospitalizations.
Yeah, that wasn't my question, but thanks.
Okay. Julia, go ahead.
Could you clarify, when you said something about 25% parents aren't testing?
That's just from looking at, I keep a list, I have to keep a list of all the students who are out, and so looking at the number of students who I send out, either because they're symptomatic, or because they were quarantined, it's about 25% of parents that are actually getting their student tested, either due to symptoms or because they were a close contact.
Do you have any sense whether that's an organized, because I've heard that that's sort of an organized underground in some areas. Do you have any sense whether that's going on here, or whether parents are just trying to keep their kids in school, or the quarantine? Now, do you have any sense about what's causing that?
I don't, no.
Do, Sarah, do you get a list, if they do test, does that, does that test come back to you? Do you know, do you get notified of that then?
I do, because then I have to contact trace their close contacts if a student tests positive.
Okay, okay.
Or if they don't have any close contacts. The health department and I communicate about students who have tested positive, and students who are quarantined because a family member has tested positive, because they can't be in school when they're isolated or quarantined.
Okay.
I have a question for Sheri. Then, in Washburn County, how many students have tested positive for COVID?
I don't have the information off the top of my head. My home health professional usually runs the data once a week. My donation puts the age breakdown on it. Let me see, if I can pull it first. I should put that on there this time. I can certainly have to run a report and give you that information off.
Or just, do you have a estimate or a guess? And would that timeframe be from school year, or how would that work?
Well, I can, I can run a report for whatever testing you'd like. But I don't know that we can, I don't think we can pull by school. We can pull overall.
By age bracket?
You know, by age, but not, not by school.
Well, just, I mean, just with the letter, just high levels of COVID, we have eight the whole school year. Just with our school, does not seem like, it just makes, the letter makes it sound like it's worse than it is, is my statement.
COVID is spreading. The levels are very high over Wisconsin. It's only going to get worse, and the fact that you can't, very quickly, I think speaks to how much control that the school is taking to exclude contacts and family members of potential COVID cases. If you don't do that, then your numbers are already higher.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Mr. Hanson?
I would like to say, from the outside looking in.
Would you wanna come up and?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, would you have a seat if you wanna come up and speak, please?
From the outside looking in, the responsibility of the public school is to teach our children. It's not to stop COVID. And so if, if the nurse is gonna make it her responsibility to stop COVID, we are, we are changing our focus. We're changing our perspective. There are healthy students that are being taken out of school because other students are putting them down on a piece of paper, and that's not right. because other students are putting them down on a piece of paper, and that's not right. Healthy students need to be in school, learning, not sitting at home, and that's my statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have, do we have any other questions or comments this evening regarding this update?
I mean, I just want to thank Sarah for all her hard work, and I think some comments made were directed towards her, and it's not her making these decisions. We're looking at a state mandate, we're looking at state regulations, and I think if there's concerns at that level, those concerns can be brought to that level. So just thank you, Sarah, for your extra work and the diligence you're doing.
Thank you, Sarah. I know it adds a lot to your job, and I appreciate the report.
Yep, we look forward to our next report next month, which hopefully will be in a better position. That would be, that would be great. So is there any more questions or comments regarding this, this subject matter? Okay, if not, we're going to receive and place on file. Thank you very much for joining us tonight, Sheri. We appreciate your help.
Thank you. And thank you, Sarah.
All right, we're going to move on to item D, review and certify written evaluations of school safety drills as required by Wisconsin Act one forty-three.
Anybody have any questions?
We did, we, we did have those in our board doc, so I hope that everybody took the time to look at them. I am going to ask if there is a consensus to move this to the regular board meeting.
I believe there's a consensus.
Okay. Yes, everybody, okay, great, thank you very much. All right. Then we're going to move on to item E, discuss appointment of board delegate and alternate delegate to the virtual Wisconsin State Education Convention, January twentieth through the twenty-second of twenty twenty-one. Do I have any interest of anyone wanting to do that? Mr. Johnson?
I'm sorry? Yes, go ahead. That'll be fine.
Would you like to be our delegate? And then, can I have an alternate delegate, please? Anyone?
I don't think I'm able to this year.
I'll do it.
Michelle, that would be absolutely wonderful, thank you. So we have Paul being the board delegate and the alternate delegate being Michelle Jepson.
It's noted that it's virtual this year, correct?
Yes, yes, it is virtual, so. And I believe there will be instructions given when it is, in his time, okay, great. All right. And then we will receive and place that on file as well. All right, item F is the thirty-sixty-ninety-day planning cycle. Everybody had a chance to look at that information? Is there any questions? All right. Then we will go ahead and receive and place that on file. Do we have a consensus to do that? All right. And item G, the financial update, Mrs. Grindell.
So the quick financial update for September, we had a beginning checking balance of about six-point-two million. We took in total income of about five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, for a total of about six-point-seven before vouchers. We paid two payrolls for the month. As you can see, we also made a debt payment, principal payment and interest payment, along with vouchers for total expenditures of four-point-two million, leaving the checking account balance at around two-point-five million.
Okay, any questions, anyone, regarding the financial update? Okay. Do we have a consensus to receive and place this on file? Yes, okay. All right, and item H, approval of the vouchers. Any questions? Okay, do we have a consensus to move this to the regular board meeting as part of the consent agenda?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, yes. All right, then, item number three, convening to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes nineteen-point-eight-five, parent one, parent C, to consider, to consider the employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. May I have a motion to go into closed session?
I'd so much.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Do you want me to, or? Yes. All right.